All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Brandywine School District Board of Education Regular Meeting tonight on Monday, October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. We are live in the Brandywine High School Auditorium, also with a Zoom broadcast. Ms. Harris, may I have a roll call, please? Here. Here.
Here.
Present.
Here.
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 Thank you, Ms. Harris. This time, I would like to ask Mr. Ackerman to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Mister Republic, his allegiance, one nation, under God, indivisible, ever since the birth of liberty and justice for all.
Before I entertain any motions to approve the agenda, I would like to make two adjustments. I would like to recommend we remove item ten A under Old Business. We'll be moving that to next month. And I would like to request that we move item ten B related to the Wilmington Wilmington Learning Collaborative, move that action item immediately following public comment. With those two adjustments, I will entertain to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, this will start us off with our first of the year high school reporters, starting with Brandywine High School's Evan Gant. If you want to come down to the stage microphone, please.
Hello? Can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Good evening, board members. My name is Evan Gant, and I am the Student Council President for Brandywine High School. First is our report for the fall sports season. For the fall sports report, our football team is currently going oh and six this season, and we're wishing our team good luck on their homecoming game against Wilmington Friends on October twenty-eighth. Our field hockey team is going five and three at the home game against Concord this Wednesday. Our boys soccer team is going six and four with a home game that was supposed to happen today, but was sadly canceled due to the storm. Our girls volleyball team has had a great comeback with a six-game winning streak this season. Next is Brandywine's Clubs and Organizations. Each are all starting off the new school year with high spirits. VHS's gardening club is having a meeting tomorrow after school to begin planting African violets, aloe, and pothos plants. Brandywine's cheerleading team is hosting a fundraiser at Chick-fil-A tonight from five to eight P. M. At the Concord Mall. Brandywine's Aeronautics Club has had their first information meeting this past Thursday for any and all students interested in learning how to pilot drones for film or for physical flight. The Student Voice Advisory in the Brandywine School District is starting up, and this will give students an incredible opportunity to take part in the never-changing landscape of the school district. TSA, the Technology Student Association, is starting up and will allow students to exercise their STEM-related skills in state and national-level competitions. VHS's Drama Club will be performing Bad Auditions by Bad Actors, a play by Ian McWeathie for their fall production. And Brandywine's Book Club is finishing off the first marketing period with a horror-focused selection of book offerings. We are happy to see that Brandywine has recently concluded their Senior College Application Week in the College and Career Center of Brandywine with an impressive eighty-four applications submitted. We're excited to see even more submitted as the year goes on. Our Student Council has gone off to a good start with our Sales of Dog Pound shirts concluding and planning to be distributed to the students in time for our homecoming game on the twenty-eighth. Our council is excited to watch the individual class officers prepare for Halloween hallway decorations in honor of our upcoming Spirit Week, which will be accompanied by a pep rally, the first our school has seen since pre-COVID. We are very excited to see the fun outfits and energy each class has to bring during that week. And along with Spirit Week comes the Fall Fest, which is hosted by the class of two thousand and twenty-three on October twenty-ninth from ten A. M. To two P. M. At Brandywine. And the Halloween-themed candy grams are ran by the class of two thousand and twenty-four, which will be sold from October seventeenth to the twenty-eighth. There have been student concerns regarding the incorporations of E-Hall Pass and the dress code reinforcements this year, but Brandywine's administration is doing their best to address these concerns as properly as possible as the year goes on. For updates, that's all I have for you. I'd be happy to answer any and all questions to the best of my ability. And board members, I hope you have a great rest of your night.
Oh, thank you, Evan. Sounds like a lot of good student engagement with the sports teams, the clubs, the student government. I always try to tell, you know, students that getting involved in extracurricular activities, you know, makes for a well-rounded school experience, so I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Great. Thank you. Thank you. Next up, we have Concord High School students Ashiana Patel and Miles Wylie. Why? Please, please correct me if I make any mistakes here on names.
Hello, my name is Miles Wylie.
And I'm Ashiana.
And we are the representatives for Concord High School. To get this started, last year, the community was at Concord was adjusting to returning to school in person. So one of our big objectives this year is to bring all the students back together. To do this, we have established the theme All In One Concorded One Community. And so what that just means is that all the students are going to try to work together, and teamwork and cooperation are our main focuses. To do that, we've had some leadership meetings for fall sports. All of our captains come together the first Monday, or I guess only Monday, Monday of each week, and we're taught by a former NFL athlete and Concord graduate on how to be better captains and lead our teams.
Also going along with our One Concorded One Community initiative, we have more of an administrative focus on our student council this year. In the past, it's been mostly student-run, and sometimes we try to organize events that don't always be able to, that aren't always able to be pulled through. But this year, it's actually run by administrators. Dr. Royster heads it, along with other people who are willing to help and step in. Right now, our student council at our last meeting planned for our homecoming and our Spirit Week, we sent out a poll, so our student body can vote on the Spirit Week events and themes, so that they know what to dress up as, and we have a little bit more student involvement just across our Concord community.
Another area we're working on is community involvement. So we are partnered with DDCC, that's the Delaware Breast Cancer Coalition. So a lot of our sports are working with them to help raise money for breast cancer. I'm on the soccer team, and we recently just gave them fifteen hundred dollar donation that we made from selling bracelets. So that's been a great way to get advocacy for the community.
We also have a lot of club involvement, not only in the Concord community, but around Delaware in general. I'm our National Honor Society Secretary, and just recently, we have a committee called Concord Love, in which our main focus is giving back to our Concord community, whether that's through decorating the guidance office or putting posters up around the hall that have to do with whatever season it is. We decorated the C.C. hallway with winter posters last year, and this year, our first initiative back was to decorate the custodians' office for Custodian Appreciation Day. So our last meeting, everybody had to make a card that was personalized to whatever custodian that they were randomized with, and we decorated their office. So when the custodians came into work the following morning, their office was ready for them. And the Interact Club recently partnered with the Delaware Humane Society, and they started a drive for donations, like pet food, pet collars, and things like that, to give back to the community outside of Concord High School. We also recently started doing radar recognition, in which teachers and students can nominate people that they feel have demonstrated the Concord way on a day-to-day basis. Just recently, Ms. Brown was named the Educational Support Professor of the Year. She is the Secretary in the Guidance Office, and she's so amazing to walk into. She's always willing to help her students, and we really are so proud of that accomplishment.
Okay, so another focus of this year is the school climate and culture. And to handle that and make that better, we've instituted E-Hall Pass along with the phone collection system. So E-Hall Pass is just an online program where, in order to get out of the classroom, say, to go to the bathroom, or to get a drink from the water fountain, or make a visit, students will just make that pass using their school Chromebook. And so that's done a great job of keeping our hallways in check, and we know who's outside of the classroom and who's inside as opposed to a physical pass. And the phones, I think, have done a great job of increasing engagement within the classroom, because students are not on their phone, and rather, they're engaging with the teacher. Lastly, we've set up Students for Success in College. I know the administrative team and counseling team have done a great job of holding meetings for applications, scholarships, and the Stand By Me Program that will help students know what the processes look like, so that they can do a better job in applying to college.
That's all we have for you guys today. We're going to answer any questions that you guys may have, but we thank you for your time.
Great. Ashiana and Miles, thank you very much for your times. Great. I love the One Concorded theme and, you know, the peer engagement, and I wish you guys the best success in recruiting your peers to participate in some of the leadership activities. I think when students get together in groups, they'll find that they have a lot more in common than they do in differences. So best of luck for that, and I'm really excited to hear the the measures with the phone and that, you know, U.S. students are acknowledging that it has increased engagement in the classroom. I think phones are a huge distraction, and I'm glad to see that, you know, you recognize the benefits of that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? And last but certainly not least, Mount Pleasant High School Dylan Kim and May Wang.
Mister President, members of the Brandywine School District Board and members of the Brandywine School District community, my name is Dylan Kim. This is May Wong, and we are the Student Council President and Vice President for Mount Pleasant High School. This past month was an exciting return for our students as our first normal back-to-school season since the COVID-nineteen pandemic began. Our Green Knights were welcomed back into the school with a red carpet upon the ground. Mount Pleasant has adopted a new motto, "We Are Mounts." The R stands for accountable, respectful, and engaged. This motto was created in order to further put focus on our vision as a school and as a community. We kicked off our school year with club showcases in the Student Center, where new and returning students were able to interact with and see clubs such as Drama, Black Student Union, JROTC, Frozen Power, Marching Band, Jazz Band, and so much more. We're excited to announce some of our newer extracurriculars at our school, the Dungeons and Dragons Club, the Science Club, Vex Robotics, Archery, and finally, Peer Tutoring. We furthered our celebration of returning to school and showcasing our wonderful extracurriculars at the "We Are Back-to-School Kickoff," where there were food trucks from all around the community, and we had a great time. Recently, our juniors and seniors had access to college tours in the library and the cafeteria, where colleges from all over the country came to inform us about our options and what we can expect at their college. Some colleges included the Massachusetts Institute of Technology, the University of Delaware, and upcoming colleges include Penn State and the United States Naval Academy. Around this time, we were very excited to find out that our Green Knights Drama Team had won the prestigious United States of Frozen contest that awarded one school from each state across the United States the right to play the production of Frozen. Three hundred schools nationwide competed in this contest and were assessed on how well they fit the theme of "Love is an Open Door," designed to promote inclusion and outreach in the high school theater programs. We are pleased to say that our very own Mount Pleasant High School will be playing Frozen in the spring season. This outstanding achievement reflects greatly upon our community and our never-ending mission to cultivate the next generation for a better future. Two weeks ago, we had a successful Spirit Week that was followed by an amazing homecoming event with a parade, game, and dance. Our students were all excited to return to normalcy with the comeback of the traditional homecoming dance. Our football team was victorious against Concord High School with a score of seven-zero. And this past weekend, our school football team won against our other rival, Brandywine High School, with a score of thirty-four-zero. Go Knights! With that being said, the Mount Pleasant High School community would like to thank the school board for their continued efforts to provide a high-quality education for us all. That is all, and we are open to questions.
Great. Thank you very much, Dylan and May. Did you mention in some of the new extracurriculars, peer tutoring was included in that?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I think that's excellent. And certainly being pioneers with being the first in the state to offer Frozen, I think, is good, and I just want to commend you on your decision to wear a suit and tie tonight. Much respect, young man.
Thank you, sir.
That is, dressing for the occasion is a lost art in today's youth, and you've done it well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any additional? Oh, Mike.
Hello? Have you guys had an opportunity to do, meet with Joint Student Council? Have those events occurred yet?
This has not happened this year yet, ma'am. However, I think we're going to start to do that in the upcoming months.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Certainly, as always, we know our high school students have other commitments and studies to attend to, so you're always welcome to stay, but if you would like to exit, we certainly understand.
Mister Scrobott, I'd like to just point out that tonight is the first night that our student reporters have actually presented to the board. And to be that poised and articulate in front of a group in the auditorium, just absolutely amazing. And the second point, I always say, I feel ashamed. I think back to what I was involved in in high school, and then I listened to these student reporters. Man, service to each other, service to their community, that unfortunately was not me back in high school, and I'm just proud of these young men and women and how they see themselves serving others. So just thank you tonight to those student reporters. You made my evening.
Thank you, Superintendent. Next up on our special presentation and recognitions, first up, we have our two thousand and twenty-three District Teacher of the Year, Ms. Amadupe Uchichi from Concord High School. And who's introducing?
Good evening, President Scrobott, Vice President Heller, Superintendent Holder, members of our board, esteemed audience, and all who are joining us via Zoom tonight. Good evening. I am Delithia McIntyre, and I am the very excited Director of Human Resources. Kudos to our students and their awesome presentations. We also enjoy those, and we're excited that we, once again, get to kick off our school year with announcing winners for our district for both Teacher of the Year and Educator Support Professional of the Year, as well as Behavior Health Specialist of the Year. So these are awards that people are nominated for, for their buildings, and they go through a competition process. There's a screening, there are committees that evaluate the information that is presented on their behalf. And tonight, we chose to celebrate our district winners, who were also building winners. Unfortunately, Ms. Amadupe is under the weather and could not join us this evening, and Ms. Pickering is not able to be here this evening. However, Mister Mayor, the very proud principal, is going to come up of Concord High School because his Teacher of the Year for his building and his Educator Support Professional of the Year for his building are also our district winners for the year. So we will reserve Ms. Amadupe and bring her back on another evening, since she's under the weather this evening. However, Mister Mayor, I invite you to come on up, and we will celebrate your Educator Support Professional of the Year, and then Mister Wicker will acknowledge one of the other buildings who's Behavior Health Specialist winner. Mister Mayor.
Good evening. President John Scrobott, Vice President Jason Heller, board members, Superintendent Holder, thank you for giving us the opportunity to acknowledge and honor such great and outstanding people. So at this time, I would like to ask Mrs. Meg Brown to come to the stage, please.
Few words I'd like to make sure that I share about Mrs. Brown. Mrs. Brown is one of our Administrative Assistants in our Guidance Office, and believe me, she certainly gives a lot of guidance, not only to the adults and kids, but certainly any folks that will to walk in. She really does give of herself unconditionally to the people. She serves in such an outstanding way. She has a way to really engage people so that they feel warm, heard, and welcomed. Mrs. Brown has many adjectives that certainly support her nomination and recognition as the District Educational Professional of the Year. She is kind, she's compassionate, she's hardworking, she is committed, she's patient, and so many more. She exemplifies the Concord way, respect, responsibility, and resilience. She serves each and every person with the attention that they need. She helps us in our Guidance Office with so many things that go beyond the job title that she has as an Administrative Assistant. She is just an outstanding person. She is all-in, one Concorded, one community. She is proud to be BSD, Superintendent Holder. She exemplifies everything that we appreciate, and I can't be more happier and proud to recognize Mrs. Meg Brown as the Educational Support Professional of the Year for the District. Thank you.
Congratulations, Miss Brown. I know it's, you know, it's always nice to be recognized by not only your peers in your building, but to be recognized by the district. I think it's an incredible honor, something that all of our, you know, winners this year should be proud of, and we're certainly proud to have you all as our representatives. So thank you again, Miss Brown, and sorry that Ms. Pickering and Ms. Uchichi could not be here with us this evening.
Good evening. It is my distinct pleasure, even in her absence, just to acknowledge our two thousand and twenty-three Delaware Health Professional of the Year winner, Ms. Sheila Pickering. Is it okay if you guys can give her a round of applause? Yeah, so she may be watching via Zoom. Unfortunately, she had a family conflict that she had to attend to tonight, but it was my distinct pleasure just to announce her for all of her and recognize her for all of her extreme hard work and dedication. As a former principal of Forward Elementary School, I had the opportunity to work with her for a year, as well as my time at Harlan Elementary. She is a highly dedicated high, she's a highly dedicated nurse. She takes the wellness of both staff and students and parents in the community. Those are her priorities, and so we just wanted to make sure to acknowledge her for all of her hard work and dedication to the profession and congratulate her for being nominated our two thousand and twenty-three Behavior Health Professional of the Year. Thank you.
Next up, I'd like to invite Mister Kenny Rivera to introduce some recognition for some BSD students who have attained the highest honor in scouting, the Eagle Scout.
Good evening. Four Concord High School students, Adam Berisa, Nicholas Aiden Fuse, Michael Pollens, and Jared Roman, have recently achieved the Boy Scout rank of Eagle Scout, the highest rank in scouting. The requirements for Eagle Scout rank include obtaining a minimum of twenty-one merit badges, the fourteen required in the seven elective, holding positions of leadership in a troop, the completion of an Eagle Scout project that benefits an organization in the community, and the completion of an Eagle Board of Review. These young men have been or will be formally recognized for their achievement in Eagle Scout Court of Honor. So first, Adam. Adam, do you want to step forward? Adam's Eagle Scout project was to improve the Halaamore Memorial Garden at Saint Peter and Paul's Ukrainian Orthodox Church. Adam replaced the plot of grass between two benches that framed the memorial space with a patio composed of pavers and memorial stones, creating the patron's path. Adam demonstrated leadership over the year by fundraising, designing, and building. The garden was blessed by Metropolitan Anthony. Great job. Mister Michael Pollens. For Michael's Eagle Scout project, he built an outdoor two-stall horse wash station at Bellevue State Park. This was completed with the assistance of Michael's fellow scouts and scout parents just this past summer. Congratulations and thank you much. Jared Roman. Jared built a split-rail fence around pre-established garden beds at Carcroft Elementary School, where he also attended when he was younger. Jared designed a fence to protect their gardens from animals, which now allows students to learn more about growing plants. He also installed a gate that was wide enough for a lawnmower to enter. Great job, Jared. And lastly, Aiden Fuse, he wanted to attend tonight, but he was unable. He has graduated, and he has completed a mechanical engineering project at college tonight. While Aiden was volunteering at the JCC's campfire events, he saw a need for safe, dry shelter to store firewood, as well as the need for an elevated preparation table for food. He reached out to local businesses for donations, and with the assistance of fellow scouts and leaders, he supervised the construction of a high shed and a high food prep table. Congratulations to Adam, Michael, Jared, and Aiden.
What a fantastic achievement for each of you. Certainly, you know, a fraternity of scouts that, you know, not everyone can achieve that level of success with the Eagle Scout rank, and it's something that I hope that you'll proudly put on every application and resume, or will serve you for the rest of your life and show everyone your commitment, your perseverance, your dedication, and your intelligence with the rank of Eagle Scout. So congratulations to each of you. And Mister Rivera, up next with Choice Information Night overview.
Thank you. Good evening, Presidents Scrobott, Vice President Heller, Superintendent Holder, and members of the board. We have a presentation that we're going to show here in one second, too. Tonight, I'd like to take a few moments to discuss school choice with you, as well as the members for our audience, joining in person and virtually. Delaware School Choice program allows families living in Delaware to apply to enroll their children in any Delaware Public School District charter school or VOTAC school, regardless of their home address. With a few exceptions, families must choice students into schools on the School Choice application window, and that's what brings me here tonight. In just a few short weeks, the School Choice window will open in Delaware. Choice applications for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year will open Monday, November seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, at eight A. M. Families can find more information on the statewide School Choice website that is up on the screen now. That's www.scholechoicede.org. A few key dates for this calendar year. On this slide, you can see that the key dates for two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year regarding school choice, as I just shared.
As I just shared, the applications will open up on November 7 at 8:00 a.m. The application window will close on January 11, 2023. Districts have until February 28, 2023, to extend their invitation to students. And families have until March 17, 2023, to accept those invitations. We are inviting all families to join us on Thursday, November 10, 7:00 p.m., right here at Brandywine High School for a Choice Information Night. This event will feature an overview of our district and all that we have to offer, followed by an opportunity for our families to begin their choice application right here if they choose to do so. We'll have computers available, as well as team members on site who can answer any questions about the application process. We want to do all that we can to assist our families. I also want to take this opportunity to share information about an upcoming event at our high schools. And I do want to emphasize that this information has changed just this evening. We're inviting the community to visit our BSD high schools on Sunday, November 6. Open house-style events will be held at all three high schools and will allow students and their families to see the amazing buildings and learn more about the academics, athletics, visual and performing arts, and the extracurricular activities available at our schools. We will begin the day at 1:00 p.m. at Mount Pleasant High School. At 3:00 p.m., you can visit Brandywine High School. And finally, at 5:00 p.m., we'll be at Concord High School. I want to emphasize one more time that this date has changed. Many of our middle school families have already received the postcard in the mail or have seen events that we've created on social media with the original date, which was set for this weekend. So what brought about this schedule change? Well, you can thank our Philadelphia Phillies. Late last evening, Major League Baseball released the schedule for the upcoming National League Championship Series, the NLCS, against the San Diego Padres, and Game 5 is slated for Sunday afternoon. And we're hoping for a clean sweep, but we're not guaranteeing that. And Game 5 is at the exact same time as these three events. So we spent today listening to our community members and our dedicated team members, and we ultimately decided that moving the high school visitation event to November 6 would ensure our families wouldn't have to decide between our event and the game. So this decision was made just this evening. Tomorrow, we'll begin communicating information about the schedule to change directly to our families. Everyone is welcome to attend this. But of course, we can't wait to see our eighth grade students and their families as they tour our high schools. You can find more information on our BSD homepage and our social media channels. Anyone with questions regarding choice can call or email the Brandywine School District Office, and we will be sure to have the most appropriate person answer your question quickly. We look forward to seeing our families at both events, the Choice Information Night on November 10 and the High School Open House is on November 6, because we have a lot of amazing things happening in our schools. We're very proud to be BSD. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Next up, that'll bring us to the Superintendent's Report, Mr. Hohler.
President Scrobott, Vice President Heller, members of the board, and members of our audience. I'm thrilled to share tonight's Superintendent Report. I'd like to begin by taking this moment to thank and recognize Uche Amaduke from Concord High School. I was honored to join together with Uche's family, colleagues from Concord High School, and other district leaders at last week's Delaware Teacher of the Year Celebration in Dover. Needless to say, Uche has already done an amazing job representing our district. While the statewide prize was given to Milford School District employee, we are beyond honored to have Uche as our Brandywine School District Teacher of the Year. Last week's event also marked Joshua Tabron's final event as the 2022 Delaware Teacher of the Year. Joshua delivered a heartfelt speech about the impact of teachers and the importance of celebrating their work just prior to the announcement of this year's winner. Again, I want to take this opportunity to thank Joshua for all of her work and advocacy throughout this past school year. I also want to take a moment to congratulate Meg Brown. Congratulations, Meg. Also from Concord High is our Brandywine School District Educator Support Professional of the Year. Meg was honored with this award late last month, and this is the first opportunity to formally congratulate her on this outstanding accomplishment. As you heard earlier this evening from her colleagues, Meg's work supporting students and staff at Concord High showcases her dedication to her field and to our district. We're all thrilled and grateful to have this opportunity tonight to recognize Uche, Meg, and Sheila Pickering for their work. Brandywine School District's three high schools recently participated in HBCU Week. HBCU is Historically Black Colleges and Universities. HBCU Week was launched in 2017 under the leadership of Wilmington Mayor Michael Prezissi. Since its inception, the week's college fair has resulted in more than 3,500 on-the-spot college acceptances and more than 23 million in scholarship awards. This year, more than 300 BSD students from our three high schools participated in the event. Of those attendees, 73 BSD students were honored with college acceptances and earned more than $1 million in scholarship. To say that is impressive is an understatement. We are also thrilled for those students who took advantage of this opportunity and have already secured college admission and scholarships at HBCU colleges and universities. I'd like to take this opportunity to echo the information that was just shared by Mr. Kenny Rivera. We're so excited to once again host our High School Visitation Day. As Mr. Rivera shared, hot off the press, the date for this event has been changed. We'll be sure to include that information in our recap that gets sent out to parents. The times for each event held at each high school will remain the same, but again, the date has been changed to Sunday, November 6. Who would have thought that we'd have two Philadelphia teams that are red hot right now? Not only are the Eagles still undefeated, which, as a lifelong Cowboys fan, I must admit, it hurts to say out loud. Got at least one more in the house tonight. But we also have the Phillies heading into the NLCS this week. Late last evening, Major League Baseball released the schedule for the playoff series, which has Game 5 scheduled for this Sunday, right in the middle of our planned event. Throughout the day, we heard from our families and our staff and ultimately made the decision to change the date to ensure our families had the opportunity to enjoy the game without missing our event. Again, while the date may be moved back a bit, our excitement hasn't changed. We always look forward to any opportunity to showcase our amazing schools and the incredible programs they have to offer. And go Cowboys. And another event I want to encourage our community to attend, our Choice Information Night, right here, Brandywine High School on Thursday, November 10, 7:00. As Mr. Rivera explained, the event will not only provide a brief overview of all that the district has to offer, but will also feature the opportunity for families to begin their choice application right alongside our team members who can assist them with any need. It's been a busy month throughout the district. I want to take a moment to recognize our Transportation Department staff, who recently held an event to honor Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Our bus drivers, bus attendants, dispatchers, and other team members all wore pink and took part in a special raffle to recognize the month. The event was particularly special as two of our transportation team members are breast cancer survivors and warriors, and we are honored to honor them. Other events throughout the district this month include Field Day at Hamby Elementary School, where students work together to complete various outdoor activities. Lancashire Elementary hosted a Spanish Heritage Night, marking and honoring the month-long observance. Special Movie Night was held at Lombardi Elementary School for students and their families. And students at Springer Middle School were treated to a special visit from an award-winning author. The seventh-grade class at Springer was recently treated to a special guest appearance by the world-renowned author, Mr. Jerry Craft. One week prior to his arrival, every seventh-grade student was given a copy of his newest book, New Kid. As always, I have to emphasize that this is just a snapshot of all the positive things happening throughout our schools each and every day. We've created a highlight video with moments from this past month. Enjoy.
Today, we were hiring an administrator. Shout out to the seventh and eighth grade avid students for doing a phenomenal job. They sold tickets, they put up the flyers, they made the pies, and we raised money for the victims of Hurricane Ian.
Oh, look at the girls go! Here come the boys! Girls win, girls win!
At the Brandywine School District, love my job. Last week, the 30th Annual Award Ceremony for Service Source was held. For those of you who don't know, Service Source is a nonprofit organization with a mission to facilitate services, resources, and partnerships to support people with disabilities, along with their families, their caregivers, and community members in order to build more inclusive communities. This year, Service Source honoree was someone very close to the Brandywine School District. Preston Campbell first joined the Facilities Department at BSD in April of 2021. At the time, he was assigned to be a substitute custodian and trainee at Lancashire Elementary School. Under the guidance of the building chief, Preston was trained to be able to substitute at any of our schools. This summer, Preston worked at Lancashire, Lombardi, Claymont, and Concord High, where he flourished. The facilities team is now working with Preston so he can be prepared to interview for a full-time position when a vacancy occurs. In addition, all of that time spent working at BSD, Preston also attended Harlan Elementary School, P.S. DePont Middle School, and graduated from Mount Pleasant High School. Please join me in congratulating Preston on his outstanding accomplishment. I'm excited to share the performance calendar for the 2022-23 school year is now live. You can find the booklet on our district homepage. This includes performing arts events being held at all of our district schools. BSD's Coordinator of Visual and Performing Arts, Dr. Dominic Pisano, worked with all of our district teachers to assemble this comprehensive listing. While creating this document, Dr. Pisano quickly noticed that in 181 school days for students, the Brandywine School District Music Department will present over 171 performances. And that number is only calendar dates. It does not include individual performances like the Blue Rocks, Spring Festival trips, local parades, community events, and the like. This means that as a district, we easily average more than one performance per day here in the district. That, my friends, is of value in the arts. Our School Nutrition Department and our school principals have been communicating with our families to share final reminders about meal benefit applications. This year, some of our BSD schools will once again require payment for school meals. Meanwhile, some of our schools will remain universal free meal sites. For the schools that will once again require payment, it's important for families to complete meal benefit applications to determine eligibility for free or reduced meals. Many of our students have been able to continue free meals through a grace period between school years. That grace period will come to an end tomorrow, October 18. And a student who does not have an approved meal benefit application on file will need payment for their school meals. If you have any questions, do not hesitate to contact our school nutrition team. And we have exciting school nutrition news to share. Our school menus and other nutrition information will now take a little bit of a different look. All of our direct links from our website will be updated, so we don't want our families to be surprised when they see the new web design and format. These new web platforms will allow our school nutrition teams to update menus and other information in real time. In light of the pandemic and its impact it had on shipping, there have been instances where our menu items have had to change. This new platform will make that process easier for our nutrition teams to quickly update. Families will continue to utilize the same links and website icons they've used in the past, but there will also be a direct link. We'll make sure to share the new link in our board recap communication coming out to families following this meeting. Time is running out to get your tickets for the President's Own Marine Band Concert. For the first time in five years, the President's Own United States Marine Band returns to the Northeast on tour, performing a pre-concert on October 30 at Mount Pleasant High School. Tickets are free and now available online. You can find a link on our district calendar and social media channels. Tickets are going fast, so make sure you secure your tickets now if you'd like to attend. Of course, I have to once again encourage our community to follow our social media channels. This report is merely a snapshot of the content that we share on our social channels. It's also where we can communicate timely information to our families. Make sure to find us and hit that like and follow buttons. In closing, I'll use the words of Preston Campbell. So I'll end my presentation this evening by saying, as Preston did, "Love my job." And of course, as always, proud to be BSD. Mr. President, that's my report.
Thank you, Superintendent Hohler. Any comments or questions from the board on the Superintendent Report? Hearing none, we will move on to our... Sorry, Kristen.
I'm down at the end.
Got to get that microphone. There you go.
So I just wanted to... Mr. Hohler, your comment about all of the activities, I love this performance calendar. And thank you, Dr. Pisano, for doing that. That's amazing, and whoever else went into doing that. Can I just take this time to put a little plug about the district, the Golden Club Card? For our members of the district that are over the age of 62, can contact district office to get their club golden card and have access to our performances free of charge. So please come out and support the arts and BSD.
Outstanding. Thank you, Ms. Pigeon. So next up, I know we made some adjustments to the agenda earlier. Move WLC till after public comment, because there are some cards here that want to address the WLC. So in doing our public comments... So in doing our public comments segment, we ask that our speakers and audience, as always, members, please be courteous and respectful to each other. This is your time to be heard regarding topics related to the Brandywine School District. Each speaker will have two minutes. We do have a couple Zoom speakers. The time will start on when you begin speaking. Zoom, or if you're here in the auditorium, the microphone is in the aisle. We'd ask you to go to, I'll call a name, and then whoever is on deck. The microphone will shut off at two minutes, just in our effort to be consistent and fair with any, with everyone. So at this time, we'll go to our Zoom speakers first. We have Yvonne Johnson. Ms. Johnson, your time will begin when you start to speak.
Good evening, Superintendent Holer and members of the Brandywine School District. Tonight, I am speaking on behalf of the Wilmington Learning Collaborative. I know that each one of you have received a letter signed by over 25 organizations in support of the Wilmington Learning Collaborative. We know that you and the educators in your district work very hard every day, but the current system has not led to successful outcomes. We know that our city's challenges extend beyond schools. As advocates, we work alongside and try to support our neighbors who too often experience strained communities and shortened futures because of the efforts of gun violence, racism, segregation, poor nutrition, inequitable distribution and access of supports, and many other challenges. I'd like to share this evening some of the organizations that have signed on to this letter. There's a lot more to the letter, but you already have it, and I hope that you all read it. So we really want you to support the Wilmington Learning Collaborative. I will begin by reading the organizations. Delaware State University, Wilmington Community Advisory Council, Kids Count in Delaware, Delaware Center for Justice, the ACLU of Delaware, Delaware PTA, Contact Lifeline Incorporated, Relay Graduate School of Education, Nativity Prep School, Moms Demand Action, Safe Schools, Stop the Violence Prayer Chain, Network Delaware, Maternal and Child Death Review Commission, College of Education and Human Development, Network Connect, Wilmington Alliance, the Latin American Community Center, Reach, the Delaware NAACP State Conference of Branches, Delaware CAN, Delaware Coalition Against Gun Violence, the Brandywine Buzz, Mount Joy United Methodist Church, Kingswood Community Center, First State Educate, and the President of CSC. I urge all of you to please consider that we must take action. Please vote yes in favor of the Wilmington Learning Collaborative, and thank you for this opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, for your comments. I will also add too, public comment is not a time to, the board will not necessarily respond to any comments or questions, but if you filled out the card or signed up online, we have your contact information. And myself or a member of the district administration can and will follow up with you. Next up, Priscilla Posse on Zoom.
Thank you. Good evening, Brandywine School Board and community members. My name is Dr. Priscilla Posse, the Assistant Clinical Director for Complex Primary Care and Community Medicine at Christiana Care, where my role involves oversight of school-based health centers that provides wellness and acute care to elementary and high school students. As a pediatrician, my priority focus is on the overall health and well-being of all children. We know that environment known as social determinants of health, where people eat, sleep, work, and play, influence the impact of both physical and mental health outcomes. For our children, a critical social determinant of health is the school environment and their education status. A strong learning foundation in early childhood prepares our children for the educational experiences of kindergarten and beyond, so they can navigate opportunities for advanced education and employment. As such, I strongly support the Wilmington Learning Collaborative, which provides a framework to enhance educational resources for our students and provide appropriate support measures for our teachers and administrators to address our children's physical health and mental wellness needs. Many of my patients attend school in the Brandy School, Brandywine School District, and Christiana Care's health centers in all the high schools. The district has done a wonderful job to transition back to in-person classes and address learning gaps. Yet as classes and programs are being reestablished, we recognize the importance to promote educational equity and equitable access to learning resources and programs. With the Learning Collaborative, schools and school districts can benefit from partnerships to ensure that children who live in one zip code receive equitable access to quality education, enrichment resources, and behavioral and counseling support as children who live in another zip code in the city of Wilmington. Every child at every school in this city must have the same chance for literacy at an early age and overall academic success. And equally, the collaborative offers opportunities for parents and families to engage in curriculum development and educational promotion. As such, I applaud our governor and his team led by John Sheehan and Emily David, as well as the school boards, to advocate for this vision. I strongly urge the school board to vote in favor of our children and their deserved education. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Posse. That's all for our Zoom commenters. Everyone else is in the live room. Again, I will announce first person to speak, followed by someone, the next person on deck. First up, we have Jeanette Wilt, followed by James Spadola.
Okay. Good evening, Superintendent Holer and Brandywine School Board members and esteemed guests. My name is Jeanette Wilt. I'm here tonight speaking to you as the treasurer for the Delaware State Education Association. I serve as a leadership team member for the DSCA Early Childhood Task Force. As a high school teacher, this has been eye-opening. This evening, I ask our board members to support the Basic Preschool Special Education Resolution that is being presented by DSCA members to school boards throughout Delaware. In Delaware, preschools, children with special needs who are coded as basic are funded at 12.8 children per teacher, while House Bill 86, which was signed into law in 2021, ensured that K to 12 children with special needs coded as basic are funded at 8.4 children per teacher. It is illogical to have preschoolers with disabilities who are in, who are more in need of one-on-one and small group instruction to have higher child-to-teacher ratios than children in kindergarten through 12th grade. Furthermore, the PRC basicest special education ratio is higher than the required Delaware Office of Childcare Licensing Ratio for preschoolers and the DE Stars preschool ratio. And the OCCL and DE Stars ratio were designed for classrooms with very few children with disabilities integrated into the classrooms. Again, it is illogical to have higher child-to-teacher ratios for children with disabilities than for those without disabilities. I thank the Brandywine leaders for supporting the preschool programs at Bush PS and Harlan Elementary, and I ask our board members to support this resolution next month to send a clear message to state leaders that the Brandywine School District supports increased funding and increased access to quality education for all preschoolers with disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilt. Next up, we have James Spadola, followed by Chandra Pitts.
Hi, everybody. I'm James Spadola with Wilmington City Council. First, I'm here to talk about a topic that's on nobody's minds, the track at P.S. Dupont. I thank the Brandywine School Board and the P.S. admin team for letting the community use the track. It's such a great resource on there quite a bit. It's used every day by residents that live right around it. Recently, I was approached by one of the elderly residents that I see there quite a bit, and she said, hey, can we get some lights so we can use it during the morning and the winter and at night? And I think, you know, especially with COVID, the obesity epidemic that we'll always have, you know, exercise goes a long way with that, and I think getting lights there would make a lot of sense. So I'll follow up with you all about that. Secondly, in terms of Wilmington Learning Collaborative, I went, I went to a handful of the info sessions on it, and I think, you know, I, I think it's a, it's a step in the right direction. I would encourage you to support it. Even if you're on the fence, there's a exit clause I just heard about tonight. So if it's something that isn't working out, you know, we can, you can take a step back at some point. But I think, you know, we, we think about the city schools, we need your help, and this would be a step in the positive direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Spadola. Next up, we have Chandra Pitts, followed by Rosalyn Webb.
Good evening. So much pride, so much things to be celebrated. I commend all of you. The students that spoke so eloquently and powerfully. Some things that stood up, I'm going to piggyback off of with regard to building a strong school culture and climate, and most importantly, cultivating the next generation for a better future, as your students spoke about. I'm here not to, to celebrate the pride with you, but also to not let the pride overshadow the pain that some parents are feeling tonight and the triumphs force us not to look at the trauma that's ever-present here in the school district. I'm here to speak in support of a couple of Brandywine School District parents around a few issues. Number one, a rush to judgment surrounding an issue that happened on Friday night, September 16th, that allegedly involved multiple Brandywine School District students. By Monday morning, this was Friday night, by Monday morning, Principal Meyer from Concord called the mother of one of the girls to inform her that she was not permitted back into school and to inform her of disciplinary action that had already been decided against her daughter. This call came after several unreturned calls about, from the same mother to the same principal, about the education path and supports that her daughter would need to move forward. Number two, the harsh discipline and sentence. Forty-five school day suspension out of school. A sentence that could destroy everything a student has worked for over her entire academic journey. Twelve years in two of these cases where both girls were a senior, and one in particular, whose mother is here this evening, had never had any disciplinary record of any violence of any kind. And in this case, not to minimize, but never struck, swung a punch, or anything. She was accused of something that many kids and many adults do, holding her phone to record an incident. Forty-five days, a harsh disciplinary sentence. Number three, the punitive response. A lifetime criminal record because also a part of this was felony charges, which led to the domino effect.
Afraid we're at time. We have to be fair to everyone. We have a lot of speakers tonight. No. Thank you. Next up, we have Rosalyn Webb, followed by Karen Eller.
How you doing? My name is Rosalyn Webb. I'm here today on behalf of my daughter, Jerina Green, and the three other girls. The incident that happened last month on the 16th. Forty-five days. That should, they shouldn't be really accountable for forty-five days out of school. Now, something needs to be done, and it's sad that they're missing a lot of school, which all put them in an alternative school. It's not right, and that goes for a lot of kids that, you know, different charges and stuff like that. Forty-five days, they should be in school. They should have been suspended about 10 days and back in school, but forty-five days and they still have to go to court? They, the charges might be just be dropped. We don't know. For forty-five days, I come on now.
Thank you, Ms. Webb. Next up is Karen Eller, followed by Darrell Chambers.
Good evening. I'm here before each of you this evening, asking for your support and vote in moving forward on the next steps with the Wilmington Learning Collaborative. These collaborative efforts across Christina, Brandywine, and Red Clay will empower educators, school leaders, our students, and empower the communities we serve. The framework of the WLC is a new approach to support our schools across the city that need a targeted focus concentrating our efforts on improving outcomes and opportunities for students grounded in equity and not only addressing the barriers, but finding solutions to those barriers impacting our families and students. Over the past year, there have been hundreds of community and school engagement sessions. I've heard from families, educators, community members, and voices of our school-aged children across the city of Wilmington, from elementary to high school. Some of our high school youth in the city shared how they wanted opportunities outside of their schools. They shared the need for more focus on mental health and the need to address teacher bias. Families from our Muslim community shared stories about school bullying, how we can improve their children's school experience, including an increase in translators available in our schools. Community members shared how they wanted transparency with how money is spent and how it directly impacted the outcomes for students. We have a unique opportunity to take all of this feedback from hundreds of sessions and voices from across the city and move forward together across all three school districts to truly make our schools places of hope, peace, healing, and joy. We can't let the system get in the way of changing the system. I urge you to look to the members of the board who serve the city of Wilmington and those board members that took an active role in the hundreds of collaborative sessions held throughout the Wilmington community and ask for their guidance. Board member Adrian Baum did share that this is the only plan on the table to address the inequities and barriers impacting educational outcomes. There are no other plans. While this first year is a planning year, the work started a year ago, and there are many barriers when it comes to navigating the supports. There's a lot of things we can address the first year, including the barriers around our homeless youth and their families and...
Thank you, Ms. Eller. I'm afraid we're at time. Next up, we have Darrell Chambers, followed by Christine Eisenhower.
Well, first of all, I have to thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Darrell Wolfie Chambers. I am the president and CEO of the Center for Structural Equity. And at the Center for Structural Equity, this is our basic argument, that anywhere in the country, it don't have to be Wilmington, it don't have to be Newcastle, it don't have to be Little Rock, Arkansas, but anywhere in the country where you find structural inequities, and we define structural inequities in the form of an underperforming school system. The lack of proper healthcare, overly aggressive, overly aggressive criminal justice system, so on and so on. You're going to find poor outcomes. You're going to find young black and brown men who's not able to meet the challenges up tomorrow because of these structural inequities. So one of the things that we really concentrate at the Center for Structural Equity is school. Right now, we in three or four school districts, really trying to help these kids get in a position to where they have the opportunity. And what I learned from my research is this, because I was also on the PAR project, and what I learned was this, is that PAR says that you gotta have people on the research team from the area. So I encouraged the board members today to vote to make sure that we have community members. Voices really heard, their narrative really captured. So you have people like Rosalyn on the board, a concerned parent, a childhood friend of mine, you have her on the board to help make some of these decisions. And from what I understand about the Wilmington Learning Collaborative, that this right here is going to offer the community such a chance to really to get their opinion on it, on some of the issue that's plaguing some of our kids. And as I sit and I listen to the young man, and because we can learn from that young man, he came here today, he was properly dressed. And I said, I'll never come to a school board member, school board meeting again, not properly dressed. Because we can learn from our kids, we can learn from our parents, we can learn from our community, and we can learn from people like you, Link, who sit here in a position of power and authority, because together, we got to do it together, because there's no other way to do it, and I thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. Next up, we have Christine Eisenhower, followed by Kevin McLaughlin.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Christine Eisenhower. I come before you today. I'm proud to have signed the letter that Yvonne Johnson just read and that I believe you all have received. I signed that letter on behalf of my organization, which is Relay Graduate School of Education, but I'm here today as a Brandywine resident and as the proud parent of a kindergartner at Carcroft Elementary. So shout out to Mrs. Kelly Callahan and our wonderful, wonderful principal, Mr. Mark Overly. I am here as an individual and as a resident of the district to be able to ask you all and to sort of join the chorus of support, asking you to vote yes to move forward with the Wilmington Learning Collaborative. The collaborative, in my opinion, it is my belief that it really represents an opportunity to center communities that have been historically disenfranchised and represents an opportunity to center the students, the community, the school in a way that our current structure does not allow us to do. So with that, I hope that you'll vote yes this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eisenhower. Next up, we have Kevin McLaughlin, followed by, forgive me, I'm having a hard time reading the handwriting. Last name looks like Callahan, starts with an L.
Good evening. I was at the August meeting and had brought up curriculum and homework and lack thereof. And I had a nice discussion with Michelle Kutch, who was willing to call me back within 24 hours. We had a nice talk. And she told me we should get back together maybe around the report card time to see where at. And we're at interims now, and I just want to say it's, it's pretty much what I thought it might be. Sorry to say, I just feel like the lack of homework, especially in the core classes, I, I believe that the two hours or two and a half hours of core classes a day is just not enough without any homework at all. I feel like the kids in middle school will not be prepared for high school for that. And then that leads me to the next thing, about a little bit of communication. My son had sent a Schoolology message to his teacher on ten-seven with no reply. Email from me on ten-ten with no reply. Email from me on ten-twelve with no reply, in wanting the classes that he's struggling with, with no homework in. So I'm here to say that we need to do better for our kids to prepare for later on in life as far as high school and college. I don't know why I'm not getting email. I'm sending him with a handwritten note tomorrow to his teacher to call me or to email me. And I think maybe she should have reached out first, because I feel like he's struggling that class. He's a straight A student except for one class, and I don't want to say the teacher, I'll try to handle it, but I'm just trying to give you an example of what is happening. And I wish there was more teacher or more, uh, parents here tonight or more on Zoom to just, and, and speak what's going on in these schools. And I want to get into, um, violence as well in schools. Is there anything that's going to be done to, to be preventative? There's fights, not just weekly, but daily in my son's school, daily. And I just want to know, what is the district doing to protect my child, your child, and all the children in the schools? And that's it. And it's good to see Dr. Halliwell in the building tonight. Uh, he's tremendously missed at Brandywine School District.
Right. Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Next up, uh, again, Callahan, did I get that right? And, uh, on deck is Pastor Pope.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm here this evening, um, in support of the Wilmington Learning Collaborative. Uh, some of the things that, uh, jump out at me when you mentioned the Wilmington Learning Collaborative is, uh, empowering educators, school leaders, and communities and improve outcomes for students in the city of Wilmington schools. Now, where I am employed at, the Center for Structural Equity, we deal with three different levels of populations of students. Indicated population, universal, and selective. Now, that indicated population, according to the Institution of Medicine, states that if it's a phenomenon going on, those students are impacted by it. Meaning opioid crisis, drug dealing, um, any deviant act you could probably think that students may get into. So if it's about empowering educators, um, if it's about bringing people together, the word collective means together, so to speak, I think that we should just put everything to the side and just think about the children. And just try to aid, assist, and eradicate any impediment or obstacle that might be in their way, just so they can afford an opportunity to get a first-class education. Let's just, you know, put everything to the side, roll up our sleeves, and, um, get involved. Myself and Mr. Chambers, we had an opportunity, we have skin in the game in the wintertime, walking around, um, with Governor Carney, Mr. Holdit right here, knocking on doors, giving out flyers, meeting the people, talking to the people. Right? So we're not just, um, Monday morning quarterbacks. We're invested in this situation. And I think it's a good opportunity to prove that, um, people just want a fair chance for their child to get a first-rate education. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Next up, we have Pastor Pope, followed by Richard Smith.
Good evening. First of all, let me say to President Skobot, to Vice President Heller, Pastor President, Mr. Ackerman, Ms. Pigeon, our illustrious superintendent, Superintendent Holder, and to Ms. Gordon, Reverend Perry, and to Ms. Stock. The eighteen years that we have operated the Achievers Academy here in the Brandywine School District, I have had the pleasure of having some contact or interaction with maybe most, certainly most, and maybe all of you. Tonight, I'm here for one purpose. I enjoyed being here because Dylan Kim, who you lauded for the attire that he was wearing this evening, started out in our Achievers Academy in the secondary schools. And suffice to say, we now are in a position to have an opportunity to not only serve the students here in the district as we continue to do, but those students are here as residents in the city of Wilmington. So I'm here to support the Wilmington Learning Collaborative because I know that at this time, we have a governor in our state who is pushing forward education. We have a superintendent who we all know as our former, probably a Secretary of Edu- uh, Education, who's a former superintendent of our district. We know the work that he's put in to serve our district. We also have former assistant superintendents of our district here. I, I see Ms. Scott, I see Mr. Simmons. This is an opportunity that we cannot afford to miss. We know our governor's pushing it forward, and I want to say to Governor Carney, thank you for all the work you're doing in our state to move the economic development forward to impact education, because education is the key to building a legacy for our state, for our district. I'm a proud, proud Brandywine parent. My children graduated from both Springer Middle School and from Brandywine High School and are now in their careers. We want every student to have the same opportunity to be successful. And so I, I not only ask, but I implore all of you to vote yes for the Brandywine, for the Wilmington Learning Collaborative. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Pope. And last but not least, Mr. Smith.
Good evening, Superintendent President, board members. I'm here in support of the Wilmington Collaborative, Learning Collaborative. But first, I must say is our people sit and look at the history of education when it come to black kids. Governor Wallace wouldn't let black kids in school. Little Rock, Arkansas blew the school up and stuff. As you go around the state, you see all kids in trouble. You guys have never walked in their shoes or their parents' shoes. Reverend Perry probably have, but you guys have not been there to see the pain suffered that these kids and family go to. And when these kids come to white teachers and stuff and don't have the why they look like them, these white teachers and stuff don't understand our black kids. We have problems in Brandywine School District. We have problems where they just send their brother just there out to Cloney Old School District. You guys don't know how to relate to black kids. Fights, it's, they can't spell, they can hardly read. We have failed. We have felt bad to black kids. I'm asking you to support this. So our black leaders and stuff from Howard University to Delaware State to all who's here can get rid of our kids and save our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. That concludes our public, public comment segment. And according to the amended agenda, we have moved item ten B, Wilmington Learning Collaborative, next in line. Mr. Holder, any introductions to this item?
Mr. Skrumat, uh, the past year, uh, we've engaged in conversations around the Wilmington Learning Collaborative for the past six months. Worked closely with, uh, the Department of Ed as well as the Governor's Office around this initiative. I've been vocal in my support and criticism, uh, of the collaborative. There are certain pieces that, um, I, I will openly admit that I'm a little nervous, um, about still. And, uh, at the same time, I am cautiously optimistic. Sitting in this auditorium several months ago, I, I used the phrase that, uh, saying from Wayne Gretzky, you, you miss a hundred percent of the shots you don't take, right? So I am, uh, in support, and I do recommend the board engage, sign off on the MOU that we continue to work together to, um, work through the, the existing issues. To begin and engage in the planning of the pilot year and the initial year of implementation. I'm going to also echo what, what Mr. Chambers said, that it's going to take more than just a school or a school team to make the difference that we want to see made in the lives of our kids. We shared the same sentiment at the public forum that was held at, at Harlan, that when we use the word collaborative, we have to use that word in its broadest sense. That it's not just schools or educators coming together. That it is other organizations, other agencies, that coming together as a whole, we, we can achieve. And in my support of the collaborative, I, I also want to make it clear that I'm in full support of engaging those other agencies, organizations. Fine example, sitting right before us today with, uh, the work that Pastor Pope has given to our kids tirelessly, day in and day out. That kind of dedication, commitment, and collaboration, we have to embrace. So it is my recommendation that, uh, we move forward with signing the MOU to continue in the planning, piloting, and initial implementation of the Wilmington Learning Collaborative.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
We have a discussion.
We'll have discussion after. If we get a second, we will have a discussion. Have a motion, Mr. Ackerman, second, Reverend Perry. Uh, any discussion on the topic?
Yes.
Ms. Stock?
Did you want me to start? Okay.
If you're ready.
Sure, yeah. Um, as a mom, board member of this district, and as a Red Clay educator who serves at a high-needs school, I know what it's like to want more for your students. After years of working where I can feel like I am beating my head against a wall, I have often wondered if anyone else cared about what was and what was not happening for my students. I applaud the governor and his team for coming up with a plan. Although as a board member and educator, I do have some areas of this MOU that I would like to make some comment. Starting with one point one, empowered schools, where it says, "Schools will be afforded additional flexibilities to meet student educator, family, and community needs." I am concerned that with this plan, that we may be having too many cooks in the kitchen, so to say, and, um, and that might make the goal of flexibility, um, difficult. Also with eight point two, educator engagement, I would urge all those involved in the leadership and administration of WLC to authentically engage educators. Since I assure you that they have many ideas on what areas are best to focus on in order to meet student needs. Nine point two, so supporting non-city schools serving city students. Um, I am looking forward to hearing what the plan is from the WLC on how our city students who represent two-thirds of our elementary population, not attending Harlan, will be supported through this plan. Ten point one, reporting requirements that each school board will receive an update at each of their regular public meetings. I thank you in advance if this were to pass, um, for your future reports and regular reports, uh, to the board. I urge all of our board members to be vigilant, um, in, in this endeavor. Um, and ten point two, the performance requirements for the Wilmington Learning Collaborative. With the creation of this new structure, the WLC will be accountable to each district for improving student outcomes. As I look at this plan, the goals are incredibly ambitious. And I do look forward to seeing how WLC will be held accountable, uh, what the plan is on how to meet all of these goals outlined. My vote tonight will reflect both of these hopes and concerns for our city students. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stock. Anybody else want to go next?
Um, I'm going to echo some of what Ms. Stock said, but I, I think this is something that we've all put an extraordinary amount of time and thought into. Uh, we all joined the board, I'm sure, to impact our communities in a positive way. And we've been discussing this proposal for a year now, which feels like a, uh, much longer than a year. So hundreds of pages of documents, meetings, discussions, feedback from the community. Um, so after all that, do I still have some concerns? I do. As I expressed at a number of public meetings, and personally with the Governor's Office and the Secretary of Education, I've, I have two concerns that still remain, two big concerns that still remain. Um, one is financial resources. Um, like Ms. Stock said, um, these are aggressive goals, which I hope we all meet, but I'm concerned that the amount of money being allocated won't allow us to meet those goals. Um, so that's my one big concern. And my other serious concern revolves around the sixty percent of BSD students who reside within the city and have the same challenges and struggles, but don't attend Harlan. So I'm concerned that these students aren't going to have access to the same supports to this initiative only because they happen to live on the wrong side of an imaginary line on a map. So, uh, as we move forward with whatever is decided, we have to keep those students top of mind to ensure they're not left further behind. So that said, I believe it was Secretary Halliwell, um, that said at one of the meetings I attended that in a district with so many schools, the needs of the whole can easily take your eye off the goals and your best intentions for a single priority school. And that, I think, is the argument for the WLC, focus without distraction. So in all this time, through all the concerns, I haven't heard an alternative, and for decades, there's been discussion on what we can do. So I think it is the time to do something, even if it might be imperfect. Um, there's still work to do, I believe, but I think we do have to do something. The kids deserve it. And I think we have an opportunity right now to actually move somewhat in the right direction. So that's what I have.
Thank you, Mr. Heller.
Um, if I may, um, when I first read the agreement, the collaborative agreement, and I read through the whereas is, I took issue with the idea that there was, um, institutional racism and barriers that have caused inequitable education system for Wilmington students. And then I, I said, wait a minute. Of course, it's institutional. It's, it was created by a judge in nineteen seventy-eight, created this situation. The plaintiffs, the folks in the city of Wilmington, wanted more resources for their students. And instead, the judge imposed a solution that made their situation worse. And I came at this from the perspective of, when I got involved with the schools, it was because I was living in Claymont, and they were looking at closing Claymont High School. We, last month, we celebrated the Claymont Twelve, which is where Claymont welcomed our black students into our regular school system and not into a segregated system. Yet, what was the reward for the Claymont system? It was to be pulled into this mess of desegregation, and all the work that was done was basically erased. And then further on, because our school had more black students than Brandywine, Mount Pleasant, or Concord, that was a problem, and that's why they closed the high school in our community. So fast forward to today, and I applaud Governor Carney for doing something to right this wrong, because it's wrong. It was wrong to impose the solution on the very people who were asking for help in the first place. So I, I like, uh, I understand what, um, Mr. Heller is saying and Ms. Stock is saying, and I agree with their points. And I'm going to support this because this is the only thing I've seen that even addresses that wrong that occurred so long ago. And I want to make sure that we don't forget the fact that two-thirds of our elementary students don't go to Harlan Elementary. They go to schools in the suburbs here in Brandywine, and, and the kids at Carcroft, thanks to Ms. Pigeon's research, actually have done pretty well in comparison to some of the other schools. But my point is, I want those students who live in the city to still get those wraparound services, even if they're going to Carcroft or they're going to one of the suburban schools, not Harlan Elementary. So let's not forget those students as well. And I think I'm comfortable with the idea that we're putting our toe into the water with this, seeing where it goes, and then we can talk in the future if, if PS Tupac would be included within this structure or not. I think at the end of the day, maybe, that maybe the city of Wilmington deserves to have its own school district again, but that's not a decision for me to make. But I will support this decision and look forward to improving the lives of those children, because, let's face it, they're the ones who are going to be supporting us in our future. So we better do it right, and we better do something now, because it's just going to get worse if we don't.
I was reminded of a birthday that I celebrated, uh, a few years ago. It was a milestone birthday, so not doing anything was out of the question, according to my mother. Because she was being her loving, yet sometimes pushy self. I acquiesced to doing a family dinner. My uncle and aunt, who were self-proclaimed foodies, recommended a, a new hibachi-style restaurant not too far from their home. Knowing my family and all who would be in attendance, I was skeptical about selecting that kind of restaurant, knowing that certain family members, particularly my grandmother, aren't as adventurous when it comes to meal selections. And as soon as she laid eyes on the sushi bar with all of its raw, uh, delicacies, I knew all And as soon as she laid eyes on the sushi bar with all of its raw uh delicacies, I knew all would be lost. My uncle heard my apprehension and recommended a a local seafood restaurant. And while I would have loved the hibachi style restaurant, the better or the greater option for all persons involved was certainly the seafood restaurant. Now, I know you're sitting there asking yourself, what in the world does this have to do with the Wilmington Learning Collaborative? Well, I'm so glad you asked. Just like the two options I was given, one, a good option that I would have loved and enjoyed, or two, a greater selection that I know I'd enjoy, but also, more importantly, more of my family members would enjoy and benefit from. As a board member of the Brandywine School District, I take pride in knowing that the staff at Harlan does a phenomenal job of providing a quality academic environment with the resources that they're given. I think that we can all agree that in in its current form, that the MOU is not perfect. But neither is the current state of educating our students who reside within the city limits. If given the laser-like attention, the authority, human capital and financial resources, we can expand our capacity to serve underserved students, offer equitable programming to all students who live in the city, partner with key community groups and organizations, and coordinate care with wraparound services. Three districts, three superintendents with three district plans, a good option. A comprehensive plan, centralizing student needs, family engagement and provide educator support, a greater option, a better option. Students at Carcroft performing, a good option. All of our students within the city performing at at their optimal potential, a better option, the ideal option. Is this plan ideal? Again, no. My personal concerns are knowing the fiscal responsibility. One would never make a large purchase without thoroughly accounting for the known costs and considering anticipated costs. The nationwide teacher shortage, the model presented to us was heavy heavily contingent upon additional human capital in the classroom and wraparound services. To not thoroughly explore this issue is concerning to me. The lack of explicit structure. The credit, to the credit of the governor's office staff, they attempted to provide a physical map or hierarchy, but also agreed that it was flawed in its depiction. With all that being said, with all that being said, in consultation with community members, I recommend that we move forward with the support of the next phase of the Wilmington Labra- Learning Collaborative. Allow me to leave you with this thought. It's from Jim Collins' book, Good to Great, and it says, "Good is the enemy of great, and that's one of the key reasons why we have so little that become great." We don't have great schools principally because we we have good schools. Few people attain great lives in large part because it's just so easy to settle for a good life. I've accepted the challenge once as a board member when I was installed, and I'm accepting the challenge again to roll up my s- my sleeves and do the hard work on the front end so that we can make sure that our students achieve optimal and an optimal academic environment. And I challenge everyone here today to do the same.
So um, I just want to speak to my fellow board members. Um, I didn't prepare anything today, not because I haven't been thinking about the Wilmington Learning Collaborative for the past many months. Um, but I didn't prepare because I wasn't sure how it was going to fall on this issue this evening. I I personally um believe the challenge ahead of us is very, is is large and um believe that we must do something for our students. But I again want to reiterate what each of you has said this evening about our students who do not attend a school within the Wilmington Learning Collaborative, but attend a school outside of the collaborative within our district. And I don't want those kids to be left behind, and that is my biggest challenge in this um with the collaborative. I, you know, I read through the MOU and I read seven point two, and it talks about the commitment to students outside of the that reside within the city of Wilmington but are so not served within the collaborative boundaries. And um, you know, Carcroft students, according to twenty nineteen proficiency scores, are at thirty percent. Their peers who do not live in the city of Wilmington are at sixty percent proficiency. So while thirty percent is better than Harlan's twenty percent, thirty percent still is not good. And I, while I want to commit to our Harlan residents, our Harlan students, our Harlan teachers and staff, as a board, I need to implore all of us to 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 push the district to not forget about our other sixty percent of our students who live in the city of Wilmington. We cannot be complacent with those results and with those proficiency scores. I, so the planning in seven point two, that is so important to me that we um and and showing up here to the commu- the community that has shown up and the people that have have provided public comment, thank you, because you've helped me in making my decision. Because that is so important, the community partnership, because as a school district, as the superintendent has said, it's not just about academics. This is about the um social res- social and emotional development of the kids, the trauma. The it's about a community supporting the kids in their experiences and trauma. And so um, we need to ensure that the students who are not at Harlan are also receiving the same um supports that that they would be offered through the Wilmington Learning Collaborative. Um, and I also want to reiterate that we have, you know, our commitment to these students in the city of Wilmington should not end when they reach the end of their fifth grade year. So wanting to push the community to ensure that they follow, the Wilmington Learning Collaborative follows these students um and provides the same levels of support to the students, because when they reach high school and middle school, and that is equally as important. And while proficiency in math and reading, we want to make sure that they are achieving well, we also want to make sure that they um don't get lost within the system when they reach our middle and high schools. So I want to say thank you to the community again for coming and want to, um, I hope that that same level of commitment for you showing up here today remains within the schools and within the collaborative to continue providing that support um so that the collaborative is as successful as everyone believes it can be.
I just want to say much of what my fellow board members have said is what I've been thinking all along. We have some concerns still, of course we do, but do we, have we heard a great number of things that we can go forward with? Yes, we have. Um, I could, I could respond to something, some of what everyone has said, but I can just say what what was said by two of my friends over here, horrific. Um, and I felt very close to what Kristen was just saying, because I didn't prepare anything for today because I wasn't quite sure what everyone was feeling. But am I excited about what I'm hearing? I am. And what I've heard from the folks out here, I'm also excited about. So thank you.
Well, this has been an interesting process, for sure. Um, I do applaud you, Governor, um, for your effort to do something bold. As I've said publicly all along, I think this plan leaves a lot to be desired. Um, I don't think that seven million is sufficient. I think it's been echoed here, there are other societal uh issues and social traumas that aren't directly addressed. Some of the supports, I think, will help in that, um, but we still need to get to some of the root causes. Um, and I and I do think this uh puts a little replacing one bureaucracy with another. Um, and my objections have always centered around, you know, some of the governance and operational concerns of our district. That being said, you know, sharing all these publicly in the past, I I do intend to vote for the WLC MOU, you know, with the understanding that you, Governor, Secretary of Ed, you know, will stand by your your words, that this will be a true collaborative effort. You know, that some of my concerns that this has potential to be politically sticky with competing interests of 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 an additional governance board, and and that will always put the needs of the students first. You know, I know this, when I decided to, you know, commit my time and energy to school board service, I I made a commitment to myself that I would base my decision on any decision that comes before, what's what's best for students. And while I have concerns about the governance and the operations, that's secondary to the needs of the students. And, you know, with the concerns and, you know, questions we have about the existing MOU, Mr. Ackerman referenced events back in nineteen seventy-eight. I know that this plan can address the needs and and be positive, and we need to do something different. Otherwise, we'll be here in twenty seventy-eight talking about the same things uh with no action. Um, and I think it was also mentioned, you know, neither I nor the district or any other board member has put forth any alternative plan in the last twelve months if we were to not participate in this. Um, so again, I think if we continue on the same path, we're going to get the same results. And while I have reservations, you know, I'm approaching this with a balance of optimism and skepticism. Um, but I will vote yes with a commitment that I will do everything I can to make it be successful and improve the outcomes of the students within our district, whether they attend Harlan or any of our other sixteen schools. You know, this doesn't rest on the shoulders of Brandywine School District alone. There's going to take a lot of people to make this work. You know, Kristen Pigeon said it nicely. Um, you know, let's see that same energy from people who came out and spoke tonight. Um, you know, this, the success of this is going to rest heavily on our entire district community and very heavily on those families and the Harlan community uh as the participating school. And I hope to see, you know, we've got a stack of names here, people that came out and spoke in favor of. And throughout this process, um, I haven't received any emails, calls, comments, public comments, uh encouraging us not to participate. Everything has been in favor of doing something new. Um, so I hope to see a lot of these faces and names at future WLC board meetings, coming back to our district, working within our schools, um, you know, showing up to support the successes, um, not just coming out when there are questions or concerns of, you know, negative events. Um, so with that, I will, will be voting yes. Uh, and, you know, the commitment that I made and asking, you know, holding the board members here accountable, asking them to hold me accountable, having us hold you all accountable to, you know, stay engaged, not let this be the hot topic of the moment that fades away, you know, once everything is agreed to and signed and, you know, let let the powers that be control it. This is a community effort, and I, you know, hope and will do what I can to maintain that in the forefront of this process to do what is in the best interest of our students.
Um, and just, just one thing as a follow-up, I just think we should thank uh Governor Carney, Secretary Haller, and especially John Sheehan. Um, so three, six months ago, three months ago, we didn't think we'd get here. And I know that the original MOU doesn't look anything like uh what we have in front of us tonight. And um, so thank you all and John, uh especially for your openness to hear from all of us, and I'm sure hundreds of other people, and your willingness to craft this um into something that's agreeable for so many, so many uh different groups. And I hope that that openness continues as we move forward and addresses these concerns. So like I said, I didn't think we would be where it sounds like we're going to be at just three months ago, and and here we are.
I agree, and I would say that's not a hope, that is an expectation. Um, so with that said, we have a motion before us to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to move forward uh with signing the MOU and continuing the planning and piloting process of the WLC. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you again, Governor, Secretary, Mr. Sheehan, for your time and attendance tonight. Appreciate it.
Mr. President, may I?
Please do.
Just a real heartfelt uh felt thank you to each of you for your leadership. Your statements tell the whole story, frankly, with respect to the seriousness with which you would approach this issue. Everything that was said in terms of reservation are things that we thought about, committed to. I'm going to stand here, as I did to, and talking to many of you on the phone, and give you my commitment, the follow-through on the concerns that you have, particularly with those students or Brandywine students living in the city but going to uh schools outside of the city. I understand that completely, some of the issues specifically with respect to governance of the board and your role in that. My re- my response to all of that is you've got a great leader here in Superintendent Holer and a board member here who are going to be two critical members of that Wilmington Collaborative Board. And I believe strongly, all the work that we've done knocking on doors, I heard a lot of stories knocking on doors around Harlan and across the city. People who want something better for their children, people who believe in their children, who people who believe in us, frankly, and 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 all of you. We need Brandywine School District as part of this collaborative. And I couldn't be happier with the way that you voted yes with your reservations, because that means you've read through the MOU, you understand the points of tension, you understand the things that we have to deliver. And I make uh my commitment to deliver on those things that are part of my purview. I'm not going to get in the way. That's not the way this is supposed to work. This is supposed to work that it comes kind of from the community and from you up. We provide resources, we provide support, we provide the kinds of things that uh the social, emotional supports and other things that are kind of outside of your current envelope. I just want to thank all of you. We had great town hall meetings with your teachers and your community at Harlan and on the Zoom format, uh, and I guess Secretary Hollidick and John and others the same. And then I I just want to, um, thank you Vice President Heller for pointing out John Sheehan and Secretary Hollidick and Jim Simmons and Cora and our whole team and Matt Littner, this guy and your lawyer. Your lawyer was very strong, supporting your interests, and the two of them working together to find some common ground that that will work. And that's our responsibility to make it work, and you have my commitment to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Governor. Appreciate it. Any members of the board need a five-minute recess?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. We will take a five-minute recess, uh reconvene here eight fifty-eight. We will take a five-minute recess, reconvene here eight fifty-eight.
Where only is it? No. You're not even there. Where's the word reports? Word reports?
Yeah, I was going to say.
Oh, this thing gave up.
I see her. Yeah.
Waiver waiver in. Our recess is over. We will reconvene the meeting. Agenda item six, board business, item A, Delaware School Board Association Executive Board, Mr. Ackerman.
The executive board meets the first week of November. So there's no reports tonight. I do apologize to Ms. Harris, although I would have gotten this information to her sooner, but. We just had, we just figured out how to communicate better, so we'll have it next time.
Very well. DSBA Legislative Committee, Ms. Gordon.
DSBA Legislative Committee met on Wednesday, October fifth. There were a few new members who joined us and Dr. Maranucci led us in a discussion of legislative priorities for the one hundred and fifty-second General Assembly. The board has received the legislative priorities and meeting minutes via school board docs, thanks to Ms. Harris. Thank you. Some of the issues discussed included initiatives to address employee shortages. And watch for and oppose initiatives to allow charters access to district tuition tax local revenue. Follow and mentor any referendum reform initiatives. Continue to advocate for mid-year unit count based on unit growth, not just student population growth. Testing requirements. Question was, all students being being required to take the SATs. Is that appropriate or should we use some other measure of student success? Our next meeting is scheduled for February first, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon. Wilmington Learning Collaborative, Reverend Perry, is there anything left to say on that topic? I think we addressed that earlier. Thank you. Ninety-one seven WMPH Advisory Committee, we have not met since the last meeting. But there is an an update, so to speak. So there have been ongoing discussions with Delaware Public Media. The existing contract that we had with them to broadcast NPR during the morning drive and evening drive. The contract has officially expired and we've kind of been operating in a quasi-month-to-month. You know, extending the relationship, but we're technically out of contract. We've tried to renegotiate some terms with them. But we've been unable to do so. So at this point, I don't think it requires a vote of the board. We're out of contract. I think we're going to, you know, formally. End the broadcasting of DPM, I'll make the appropriate notifications to Delaware Public Media. And then if the board so desires or the committee makes a recommendation to the board in the future. We can always reengage in negotiations and enter into a new contract. But our desire has kind of been to incorporate some more student learning time during the first period. That was typically being broadcast of NPR radio. Students within that first period could really use that time for some hands-on learning and gain some additional live air experience. So just kind of an update of where we are as far as, again, being out of contract and formally ending that agreement. Until we have something further to bring to the board. And I do not have a date for our next official meeting. Additional board member reports. Anyone have anything?
I just have an update on the parents with special students, parents of students with special needs council is. Their first meeting is on the twentieth of this month at MPE.
Where was that?
At MPE.
Okay, great. Thank you, Ms. Pigeon. Didn't make the agenda, but additional board reports, Maintenance Committee. Unfortunately, myself and Mr. Heller were unable to attend, but Mr. Reed has provided an update. Meeting was held Tuesday, October eleventh at Springer Middle School. Facilities is currently working on bid documents for summer twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four projects. We had a construction audit that has been finalized and once again, no audit findings. Contractors will be onsite in our schools performing work on in-service days and parent-teacher conference days. We always try to make every effort to maximize time when there are not students in the building that we can do some of the more invasive projects. Reviewed timelines and documentations of Department of Health water testing. And concerns over some of the misleading news in recent news articles was discussed. I know there was some information came out regarding the water testing and the timing of those reports. But there were subsequent testing done that was favorable. Our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November fifteenth, five PM. We will be at Claymont Elementary. And that concludes our board member reports. Next up, item seven, consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item eight, personnel matters. Do I have a motion to accept the monthly personnel report as discussed in executive session?
Second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Pigeon. I'll give Ms. Stock on the second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Student matters. Do I have a motion to accept student matters as presented and discussed in executive session?
So moved.
Oh, second.
I heard Mr. Ackerman, motion, Ms. Stock, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Old business, the amended agenda, we removed item ten A, we moved item ten B. Oh, wait, yes, and we moved item ten B to earlier, taking us to new business. Policy oh-five dot oh-two, student technology use, first read, mistaken.
Finally, I get up here. Good evening, President Scrobuck, Vice President Heller, Superintendent Super Holler. And the public which remains, and my fellow colleagues. Thank you for your time this evening. I want to discuss our current policy, five-point-two student technology use. In my initial review, the policy is quite vague. And I wanted to modify it so we had a more robust policy regarding student online safety. I'll be reading the addition to policy five-point-two, student internet safety and student technology use. This policy must clearly define our internet safety process to ensure student safety. Especially since we are a one-to-one district. It's essential our students, guardians and community have the assurance we're providing student safety online. The policies stay in intact. This, on this slide, is the addition to the existing five-point-two policy. I'm going to try and turn those sideways here. Or maybe I'll use my notes. I'm sorry. BSD contact filtering provides safety and security for students when using the internet. Electronic email, chat rooms and other forms of direct electronic communication while using their school-issued Chromebook. BSD content filtering blocks unauthorized users from hacking and other unlawful activities by minors online. BSD employees in the technology department monitor the contact filtering system to review alerts and escalate when necessary. Schools continue to educate students about appropriate online behavior. Including interacting with other individuals on social networking websites and chat rooms. Cyberbully and awareness and response through completing our annual Delaware On-Cafe program each school year. So this is in addition to our currency, current policy five-point-two. Does anybody have any questions or have I completely confused the issue?
I'm sorry. I I do have one question. I don't know if you've moved on to number one, B one.
B one?
Yeah, I don't know if you need to go over that first before I ask a question about that.
I I have a question about the first section B. So when students have their phones, so you're explicitly saying Chromebook. But if they're on the wifi, on the district wifi, on their personal devices, their cellphones. Isn't content filtering happening then too?
Correct, and we actually changed our policy last year. So they are connected to the, they they are connected to a certain subset of our internet. So soon as their phones connect, they actually have to log in to get into their phone. There's a certificate downloaded, they have to log in. And once they log in, that contact filter, contact filtering is applied. Now, if they're trying to circumvent the issue, which could be a possibility, I haven't heard much of it this year. Every day, this is, we we're utilizing GoGuardian, which was purchased by the state two years ago. So we are constantly improving the process and blocking additional websites. But as far as the phone, yes, they they do have the contact filtering.
So shouldn't that be explicit in this paragraph that it's not just when using their school-issued Chromebook? But also any personal devices that are connected to the district wifi?
I could make that modification, but due to some other policies and regulation and funding we received. We're supposed to really emphasize that students are using their district-issued Chromebook. And that mainly pertains to. The emergency connectivity funding that we received. There are exceptions to the policy. I know some students may have, and I don't think it's many that are using personal devices. Are you aware of something different? Go ahead.
Yeah, my follow-up to her question was about personal devices. So I understand in some class topics specifically, there's. Many students perhaps that are using personal devices that are more tailored to the class topic like digital arts and.
Say that second part again. I'm sorry. Any students are using.
Yeah, personal devices for classes like digital arts and things where they might be working on a Photoshop or Adobe Illustrator project on a personal device that they bring home. And then they bring that device to school to continue working on that project.
That, I mean, that's possible right now for art. We did purchase a large new art devices. So we're in the process of getting all that 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 deployed. So I since, I I believe once that new equipment's deployed, they will not be using their new devices. Especially considering the money that the money we just invested it into new art MacBooks.
But to that point, I I agree with Ms. Pigeon. I wonder if we could even just put, well, using their school-issued Chromebooks or or. And or personal devices connected to the district's network or something.
We can. That's not a problem.
Yeah, I would have to agree, that would be something we should call out.
Yeah, I would have to agree, Patty, that that would be something we should call out.
To add a personal devices?
Or just when using the district's wifi.
Yes.
However you access that wifi.
Are you asking me how they're asking?
No, I'm saying I agree with both of them.
Yeah, to add.
That's what I think it seems like more just a clarifier of, yeah, when connecting to district internet or district wifi, that, that would encompass any device that's used.
Yeah, that's not a problem. I can add that. Thank you for that suggestion.
I guess I always get confused between what's a policy and what goes into code of conduct. So is this changing anything in the code of conduct?
I'm sorry. I couldn't figure out who was speaking. Say that one more time, Kristen.
Is this changing anything in the code of conduct?
This, let me, well, when I look more in-depth into this policy, it does get, it does drill down into the acceptable student use, which is in the code of conduct.
So this'll, the same language will transfer over to the code of conduct as well.
Absolutely.
Any additional comments or questions?
Good questions. Does anyone have any more?
I actually did about, about number one. So I see in the yellow, it's, it's highlighted, but then it's crossed out that BSD employees shall block and or filter technology to discourage and limit access to websites and other material harmful to minors to improve safety and security of all students in a manner that complies with law and regulation. So that is not happening then?
That, yeah, actually because of the detail put in from the first paragraph, that does get into contact, content filtering, but it's actually very vague. So I wanted to provide more detail, which is under the policy statement.
And right. Okay, I, I understand. And then you were, you were referring to to staff members being able to use GoGuardian to, got it, got it.
You got it. And I just removed it because it was a little redundant.
Got it, got it. Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Me again.
Yep.
One other question. So how does how do you, from a technology standpoint, differentiate between a student device and a staff device?
A student personal device and a staff device or a student Chromebook?
So if BSD is content filtering and and you get a flag that there was maybe adult content, let's just say somebody was, I, I can't even think of something that they would, that would be flagged, but that would be appropriate for an adult, a staff member, a teacher, somebody that was here to be maybe looking up or researching or something like that, but not appropriate for a student. How does the technology differentiate that it's allowable for an adult, but not for a student?
Well, the way our single sign-on process works, every, everybody has to log in. So if an alert occurred, we would be able to say, we would quickly be able to identify if it was a student versus a staff.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Absolutely. And this is basically a proactive measure since we're one-to-one and the prior policy was vague in several issues. So I just wanted to add more detail, especially around the content filtering piece. And also to ensure that people realize, especially the community, that we are reviewing that information every day.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Staker.
Any other questions?
So this will come back next month for action item?
Correct.
Anyone who has any follow-up questions or comments, you know, certainly email Ms. Staker directly.
Yeah, we, we can update, add that little piece of
Absolutely.
Personal devices and we'll put it in board docs for the board to review prior.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Next up, we have monthly financial report for September 30th, 2022. Ms. Thomas?
Me too.
Ours too. Turn the whole thing.
It's okay. State run funds remain about the same. Local funds, we received roughly nine million last month. Federal funds, we received about 50%. We should receive the rest of it within the next couple of weeks. Expenditures. Bush had some excess 21 IDA funds due to COVID that we recoded. What they spent out of their local budget. So if you notice, there's a negative amount in the Bush line. The rest of the buildings are starting to spend some money. Safety and Security spent most of their funds on the SROs for the three high schools. We are seven of 27Ps, which is about 25.93%. The salary expenditures look to be on track. No federal funds were spent yet, but once we receive the funds, we will be doing some recoding for purchases that were paid out of local funds, waiting for the federal funds to come in. The prior year, the AP team are still monitoring these funds and are starting to close out any POs that are not needed. S2 and S3, that's the total expenditure report. Spec ed is over due to extra services and programs during the summer for learning loss. The business office one is over due to some coding issues. That should be fixed by next month. And S2, some are due, are over, next page please. Some of them are over due to not transferring over to their S3 funds. So Link has decided to leave that in the negative and just take it from their S3 funds. We're slowly working on reconciling both Ss to see what recoding and reallocating can be done. On the last page. This is a cash flow statement. We started with about 564,000. And for the year-to-date, we ended in a negative. Last page, I'm sorry. One more. A little bit more. There you go. So the year-to-date, we have a negative balance, but once our funds come in the end of the month, beginning of the next month, we'll be back in the in the black.
And is the process for the, after the September 30th count, has that been finalized or is that still being reconciled with the state for?
We haven't gotten the actual finalized yet. It's just come the middle of November and then any other questions?
Any questions for the board?
I have a question because I haven't seen a couple slides back. I haven't seen so much in the red before. And I just wanted confirmation that the District Finance Committee has reviewed this.
Ms. Ms. Pigeon, I can answer that question. When S2 and S3, when the plan rolled out, we gave each building a lump sum. Some of that money came from S2, some of it came from S3. The negative balance, as you see, we just haven't coded them to S3 yet. So they're, they're really not overspent.
Correct.
It just reflects what they've spent in their S2 allocation. So the money's there. We just haven't tapped into S3 yet. So it's really not a negative balance. It's just until we begin spending S3.
So, but I guess my question was, has the District Finance Committee reviewed this? And approved this?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation. I appreciate that.
There's the page that says S2 and S3 that is combined. And that's the one that only had two red that were over, these two. That's the total amount that they have left between their S2 and S3. I just gave you a separate sheets for one for S2 and one for S3.
So really kind of S2 is the before, the combined is the after.
The combined is here, the first one, and then S2 and then S3 separately.
Right.
But this is the combined.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Any additional comments or questions? All right. With that, I will entertain a motion to accept the monthly financial report for September 30th, 2022, subject to audit.
So moved.
Motion, who was the second there? Ms. Gordon? Motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Mrs. Skroba, just like to acknowledge Ms. Thomas again. This was her last appearance before our new CFO takes the helm in November. And I just can't thank Angie enough for the work she's done.
General information and meeting dates. We have lined up a board workshop, October 27th, multipurpose room, Mount Pleasant Elementary, followed by another board workshop, November 10th, followed by our regular board meeting, November 14th. So with that, thank you, members of the board and members of the public for your time and attention this evening. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Have a great evening, everyone.